Slack, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda in your packet. Discussion? Questions?
It's good, ma'am. Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. First up, Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, and Scott Reals, Engineer from Reals Engineering, discussion and our decision on approving courthouse north parking lot plans to be sent out for bids. Hi, Jason.
Hi. Well, we brought these plans for you guys to look at today. I don't know if has everybody had a chance to review them. These plans come with a caveat. The city has, when Scott originally designed this, he went to the city and asked them what they were going to require. And they said nothing, we're good to go.
Yeah.
And when he went back with the 95% plans, the city's requiring green space on the east, west, and the entire south side of that parking lot.
North side.
Or, sorry, north side.
We didn't get anything written from, did we?
No.
I asked those questions specifically about that.
No.
So who makes that call now?
Chris Gibbons is who I've been talking to in the planning department at the city. But Public Works was okay with them, everything. But the city has an off-street parking ordinance that requires five-foot offset on all property lines. And since we're redoing everything out there, they, he's wanting us to stick by the current requirements, even though it's been that way forever. And they're parking that way on the, on the north side, the funeral home is. So if we, if we had to put a five-foot setback and a curb, they will also want a barrier. You'd have to have a curb there. We'd lose that whole 17 parking stalls on the north side.
Public Works doesn't know the rules.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, they, they're worried about their portion and planning is worried about their portion.
Well, these plans aren't any good.
Well, what I'm recommending we do is we go try to get a variance from the zoning board adjustments.
Yeah, that, I've asked.
On which, on what? The south, the north side?
Yeah. We can do it easily on, and we have it on the east and the west. But the north side would require a variance. They meet the city.
If it faces an alley, I mean, what?
I mean, we'd have to put irrigating.
Once it's off, we're not going to get it probably, what do they meet, once a month?
Once a month. The deadline is today, the end of the day today for the October 15th meeting. Which, we could submit that today. That wouldn't be a problem.
Is there a decision not going to the council?
No. The council can override their decision, though.
Right. But it doesn't go to them?
No.
So how do they override it?
I don't know.
If it doesn't go to them.
I think that you could request that it go to them.
The variance board can?
The, the person bringing the request in front of the variance board, if they don't like how it turns out, they can ask that goes in front of the council, as far as I understand. But I can double check.
I don't know. Yeah, I want to double check that.
Well, I suggest that you get an application or request.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I understand.
And I'm, I'm kind of, I don't know what Brian's thinking, but I'm thinking along his same lines. Until we know what they tell us on the, for a variance, I don't want to really put the plans out there right now to bid.
No, we can't, we can't.
I agree.
Okay.
I mean, as long as you guys are okay with proceeding with the current plans and we don't need to make any adjustments to the way we hope it turns out, I guess.
We need to make sure we got, if there's anybody else we got to talk to over there besides the Public Works. We got to talk to Brandon or somebody else besides Chris Gibbons to make the call. But, I mean, that, that just improves that alley situation. I just don't understand what, why they would want that. That just doesn't make any sense. What, what did you say they wanted on both? Five-foot on both sides?
All, all property lines require a five-foot setback and a curb.
Well, you're talking about two curbs, right? With the, like islands, like we got down there by, those islands down there where Ivy and Menards are, where people run into them all the time.
Yeah.
They're great things.
What, what would we originally have had for parking spaces? And then what, what does this entail? Is it is right now?
That was a total. Forty-six? That was off a little bit. Forty-six total, including the, the accessible parking. And then we would lose the north 17.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll have green space on the east. I mean, on the west.
Both sides. Five feet between the fence and the parking lot on the east and five feet between the right-of-way and the parking lot on the west.
Are we specifying one tree for the memorial for Lee?
Not in this plant, no.
We need to do that.
There's, there's other places we can go. There just really isn't it.
Yeah, get that on the agenda.
Sure.
So you, so you're only looking for a decision on approving the plans?
Well, we were hoping that, I mean, we could at least get the board approval on the plans. That way we, if, if they happen to get passed through the city, then we're still good to go to put them out to bid.
Yeah. I guess wasn't sure if you wanted to proceed with the variance request or revise the plans to, to meet their requirement. I can do either.
Yeah, I really want to do this variance and see what happens.
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
You let us know who we need to call to raise, raise some cane.
Yeah.
They, they got to go through their process. They just go through their process.
It doesn't help to let them know how we.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll need to have somebody from representing the county at the, at the Board of Adjustments meeting. I mean, I can be there also, but I think it would be good if somebody from the county was there.
I'll be there, too.
Yeah.
Who's on that? Can you send us a list of those?
Um, I don't know, but I can.
It's on the, it's on the City Council Plus on their website.
Well, can you send us?
Sure. Get her.
So you want a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the plans as submitted pending a favorable, um.
Determination.
Variance from the City Council Plus.
Second. It's still going to have to come back and be tweaked, right?
No, I mean, not if, if they approve it, I mean.
The variance?
Yeah.
So you already got five-foot on both ends?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then is that, when, when did that go into effect, you know?
I think it was like, looked like 2001.
Then, they don't have that over here on the alley of the sidewalk, alley of the parking lot next to cross street from Cutler's, going down the alley there.
No, they don't.
There's no five-foot.
No, they're parking just the way the county was before the building was demolished.
There's a fence there.
No, you parked in there.
I did.
Yeah.
There's a fence on the west.
On the other side.
Yeah.
Well, the library does it, too. I mean, the UP Museum right there, they're, they're parking off the alley.
Right.
Okay, let's don't look for excuses. Let's get a variance by them.
I agree.
I'd be happy to go. If the board wants me to.
You can go.
Okay, so we have a motion by Wickman to approve the courthouse north parking lot plans to be sent out for bids pending favorable variance from the city zoning and adjustment board. Is that your motion?
Sure.
Just a second.
Second. Yeah, Jeff did. There is a five-foot barrier on that parking lot over there, across the street. I'm looking at it.
Really?
Yep. There is a fence in there.
Any other concerns about the parking lot?
Other than we might be wondering without it?
Yeah, we have to go. They don't meet till mid-October. It takes several weeks to bid. It's too late to get it constructed this year yet. Probably be looking at.
What does it hurt to put it out for bid? And then if we don't get a favorable decision from the Board of Adjustment or whatever they call there?
Mm-hmm. You could do that and not, not, just not award it till after that, October 15th. Uh, let's see, that, that would still give them a month to build it. Want to be done before Thanksgiving typically. It's just if it doesn't pass, you, you have to not award the project and.
Well, I mean, that doesn't hurt anything. I mean, if it doesn't pass, we got more work to do here.
Yeah, I'll have to revise the plans.
Yeah. We vote on my motion already?
No, we haven't. So when?
What do you, you have any concerns?
No, I mean, if it, if it passes, then we would be ready to go. The parking lot would be in. If it doesn't, then we would have to go back to the drawing board, I guess.
So can I rescind that mail or we wrote it down?
We haven't voted yet. It's still under discussion.
I'll rescind my motion. Seconded it was. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the plans and put them out for bid. Second.
Scott?
Yeah.
And that's in there.
Okay. Will angle parking work in that spot? The most efficient way is we will lose some if the 90-degree.
Um, I did.
It is, but.
I did three, two or three different layouts, reviewed them with Jason, and, and two of the other options were angled parking. And it was a lot less because you got, you waste space on the ends because it's angled.
Well, if it does happen and get it done for, to be able to be used for this winter.
But if it does, well, it's.
It's pretty self-explanatory. It's a, um, concrete parking lot.
What is?
If it, if it doesn't pass.
If we have to put a curb in, then we'll have to do.
We're going to come back and bid again.
Drain, correct?
Well, I, I could probably get it to drain south.
City allow it?
I would hope so. I haven't asked.
We can hope, but we need to know.
Yeah. It's possible, like, they could want it drained. I wouldn't think they would because they haven't with what we've got now. This is actually, would be a smaller parking lot, so.
But your best information today for the 47 parking spots, it can be done for under 200,000.
Yeah, that's my opinion of cost, yeah.
So how many access points can we get off the alley to get in there then?
Well, um, we have one on the east edge figured for dumpster in and out. I don't, I haven't, you know, right now, the way it's designed, the whole thing would be open. I haven't.
I appreciate that.
I could, I could probably, we could probably get one or two. I, I haven't asked them. But I think two wouldn't be unreasonable.
That helps.
Yeah.
But it would, but it would change the bid, I would guess.
Yeah, you would still lose all those 17 spots, which, which we're trying to maximize the parking, number of parking spots.
Oh, and it would also.
But the ease to get in and out of there would be.
Yeah.
Advantageous.
You could, I think, put one on the east end and the west end. I think they would be okay with that.
I'm looking at putting in the green space. It's going to be painted in the bud, just like it was over there across the.
Yep.
Street.
Actually lose a few more spots here and here.
Over here?
Yeah.
I like the way it is.
You seen they just paved it?
Yeah.
I like the way it is here.
Yeah.
Well, I asked if the lawnmower are going to give us some money back.
This does have enclosure for the recycle container and the dumpster.
Yeah.
In it, and the way it's set up now, um, we can get into it from the north or the south side. Gates on both ends, just for ease of access.
We don't know if the city approved that yet.
It is aside for the container that Matt was talking about.
But did the city approve it yet?
The city said yes, it would be fine if we put that recycle container there.
In writing then?
He wants it fenced in. I, I don't know if Matt did or not, to be honest with you.
Well, why should you start getting stuff in writing? Or on email or something?
I agree.
Okay. I didn't have a bid, but it's been, it's going to, it's going to change, so.
So I had the bid set for October 8th, which would be before that hearing. I could adjust that date if we wanted to make it.
We would need to make it be after the 15th. Sure.
Cablewoman from outer streets. That's it.
No, we'll do it 24th or week, I'm sorry.
If we have the bid date after that hearing, if they don't approve it, I could issue an addendum changing the plans and still proceed with the bid on the 20th or sometime after the 15th. With the, with the revisions.
So we have a motion by Wickman, a second by Jorgensen, to approve the courthouse north parking lot plans to be sent out for bid. Additional discussion?
So if we do that and they bid, well, it's showing here, and then it has to be adjusted. We've opened up and got the low bid. Do we, do, do we have the ability to have the guy, the low bid guy bid it?
Well.
Changes?
I would issue the changes before its bid. So they would bid the changes with an addendum.
Okay.
I just have to be quick after that hearing to get them out. But I, I could almost have a lot of it done before then.
Let's make it a regular practice so we get things in writing.
Yeah.
I do.
They've got 100,000 things going over there, and so do we. Just to, you know. You're busy, too.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is October 15th and then 10th of the year. Judgment meeting, is that what I hear?
That's just.
Well, they'll keep us posted on that.
Yep.
Andy Brown, Sheriff, Steve Winchell, Chief Deputy Sheriff and Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office, Jim Doty, Sergeant, the sheriff, and looks like we've got Sam Arcfeld here as well, and Darren Budd, Lieutenant, Council of Love's Police Department.
Scott Milner.
Scott Milner.
He's the one on the bar lap there.
All right. Morning, Scott. I'm just reading the script here.
That's fine. We change a few things, but not all of us. That's our bid.
Um, discussion and our decision to approve an authorized board to sign resolution number 57-2024 entitled "A Resolution Authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to Sign an Interlocal Agreement Between the County of Potawatomi and City of Council of Love with Respect to the 2024 Earned Justice Assistance Grant Program Award."
Don't move.
Resolution in our packet.
Second.
Scott, how much money is that this year?
This year it's 38,610. It'll be split evenly between the city and the county.
38,000, what was it last year? Remember?
I was thinking it's 50, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was thinking it's 45, 50. It's a set amount determined by the state. We don't apply if they tell us what we're going to apply for.
Yeah.
Will that, will that ever go away?
Politicians in government, so I don't have that answer for you.
I think it's my answer.
That was a very good answer. I took it over in 2009, and it was going on probably 10 years before that. So I'm assuming it's here to stay. I just can't predict from here to here what that dollar amount would be.
It's federal money, right? Coming through the state?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pass-through from the federal government to the state. And from this point on, we've had some staffing changes. So Tracy Hernandez will be the actual reporter and supplier and everything else in the future, so.
Okay.
Motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to approve resolution number 57-2024. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Herman Miller.
Aye.
Super bag on the belt. Wickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
And Jorgensen?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Does the, does the city council have to approve that, too?
Yeah, they are meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it, Scott. My scene.
All right, next we have Levas, Treasurer, or Heather from the Treasurer's Office. Discussion and our decision to approve tax suspension pursuant to Iowa Code Section 427.9 for property located at 2114 Avenue G, Council of Love. Have the request in our packet.
If you want to.
Yeah, hold on. This, it doesn't appear this lady owns the house.
Susan Schulte?
Yeah. Let me get back to my.
Uh, it's.
I think she's on there.
Pardon?
I've got it, or she's.
It's, it's, it's in a state, Nancy something. Hold on just a second, let me.
I guess I have the owner as Susan.
No.
On our Tyler system.
Uh, is she binding it under a contract?
What's that address? Got 2114.
Yeah, 21.
There's a change of title, putting her in title.
There is where?
Um, it's 2012 page 0563.
Okay.
Uh, she got it in Shirley Lawrence's estate. Give it to her.
That's what you saw on the recorded document?
Yep. What was the date of that recording? Um, it was recorded April 23rd, 2012.
Is that the same document?
I don't know what it's. It is in Susan Schulte's name.
Is it show, not show the state then?
So the, the estate of Shirley Lawrence.
Yeah.
Gave the title of the property to the Susan Schulte.
Okay.
How long does this stand for if, if it's approved?
Until it's sold or she passes away. She's on the treasurer's office.
I'll make that motion to approve, suspend the, uh, property tax on 2114 Avenue G.
Second.
We have a motion by Wickman, a second by Belt to approve the tax suspension pursuant to Iowa Code Section 427.9. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thanks, Kristen.
Heather, thanks for coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
Stick around, Heather.
Becky Lynn and Finance and Tax Office, Auditor's Office, and Mitch Kai, Chief Financial Officer, discussion and our decision on approval of bank fees concerning positive pay. And last week, American National Bank was in and made a presentation and talked about how positive pay would be good for the county. And I think we just had a few other questions.
We've had positive pay. We were kind of forced to hand to start submitting our records, checks, positive pay. And there is a fee involved in that.
State's okay with that? You, you have to submit it to who?
To the bank.
Okay, okay.
I'll make that motion to approve the payment for the positive pay fraud alert with American National Bank to be paid from, out of the board's budget.
Is that?
Mitch, you take care of that.
Is that, is that just a one-year contract?
It's an ongoing contract until we.
So does it come back? Come back each year then?
They like to come back any year, just give you guys an update anyway.
Get that put on the calendar. So what? Do you guys have any idea how many checks versus, I guess, ACH or electronic transfers you're doing?
Well, yeah, V had told me once, but I can't remember. Do you?
I have a, I have a follow-up meeting with the gal that Amy that presented last week tomorrow, where I think I'll actually have the number of items.
I thought she, we had asked her to give us the.
Yeah.
We asked her for a bunch of information and we never received any.
And I think I, I think that's what my meeting tomorrow is, to get all that from her. So I'll pass that along to all you guys once I have it. Kind of put a little write-up on it for you guys.
What those transactions look like.
I'm just guessing.
Not, is that going to include the treasurer?
I think it's going to include all the, all the.
The deeds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Wickman. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Do we want to hold until the info comes out of Scott?
Uh, well, the question is, how, how do we make the payments? And since there's already a line item in the board's budgets, it's been paying all the bank fees for the treasurer and others like it. That's just it.
Makes sense to keep it in one spot and.
Yeah. It's easier to track that way.
Then we need to find out what credits they're using with the Treasurer's Office. Do you get any credits, Heather, for having a certain amount of funds in the bank?
Outset the fees.
Uh, out with any fees?
Just the interest.
Just the interest?
Something we perceive.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so a motion by Wickman and a second by Belt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Becky. Thanks, Mitch.
Yep.
Did you figure out that one that came out that, it's got?
I contacted Kim, uh, in conservation, uh, some land grant monies go in there to the fund, and they have a plan for that.
Yeah.
When it gets built up enough.
Okay, thank you.
I can find more information if you want.
Okay, committee appointments from last week. Brian?
We had a Whitea meeting, we had a Mount Crescent ski area meeting. Uh, I went to the conservation, the Go Wild for Conservation at the landing. Board of Health. And then over the weekend, I worked the, uh, obstacle round out at Arrowhead. We wound up staying in a cabin out there. I'm here to tell you that park is awesome. We got a great staff out there. And it was really a neat deal and we loved staying at that cabin. So nice, quiet, and the, the workers there, I can't say enough about them guys. They really do a nice job out there.
Yes. Kim?
Nope.
Scott?
I think, uh, just the Mount Crescent meeting was the only thing I had. I lost, or it looks like I might lose. The watershed meeting, they don't have any funding, so they canceled their meeting. Fourth judicial, fourth judicial district, uh, is not, um, meeting, canceled theirs too, because the governor changed the rules. And the board has no power in the decisions of the local fourth district to, um, detentions. It can be a quasi advisory board if they want to be, but no. So there's no judge that sits on it anymore and, uh, they might try to meet quarterly, but then it sound like any of the supervisors from the other counties even want to go, so. So those two, those two are probably gonna go, go away.
Have they been doing anything?
In what sense? Yeah, the watershed people, yeah, they've been having projects and, and stuff. It's a huge, there's people from Carroll and all around on that one. They had money, federal money to begin with, but, but right now, apparently, then, uh, I don't know, the courts decided to change, the governor of the detention centers and all the directors and how all that works with presence.
Being the twenty-eight day we've got with the juvenile detention center here?
Not juvenile, probation.
Oh, 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 okay, they don't.
Yeah, that's all different, you know, it's Kathleen Kanozki and, um, Anderson, uh, God, what's his first name?
Gary?
No, he, he's a, uh, he's probably more of a municipal judge than.
Lindsey?
Lindsey, that's it, Lindsey. And, uh, then there was one person from the community and then there was somebody from Harrison County, Mills County, wherever includes the fourth district.
So last week I had the Whitea meeting and a MAPPA RPA policy meeting. Um, yesterday I attended the EMA long-term recovery meeting and that was meeting that Doug Rea facilitated, getting all of the players together to continue the recovery from the storms this summer. And we have the assessors conference board meeting is tomorrow night at five-thirty, where we will appoint a new assessor for the county. And then we've got the retreat on Thursday, which begins at nine o'clock and should wrap up around two-thirty, three o'clock.
Do you have an agenda for that yet?
Not finalized.
Okay.
I will have it to you. If not in today, it'll be first thing in the morning.
Okay, thanks.
That's supposed to go from, what'd you say, nine o'clock to when?
To two-thirty, three o'clock.
Okay.
Great. Are there any public comments?
I didn't see anybody sign up.
Okay. Into adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.